All right, can we take roll?
Commissioner O'Neil.
I'm here.
Commissioner Bowie.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Klaffenstein.
Here.
Commissioner Kim Nguyen. Vice Chair Deidre Nguyen.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Vice Chair Kim Nguyen.
Oh.
Commissioner Deidre Nguyen, sorry. Chair Bridigum.
Here.
And Commissioner Beckles and Commissioner Tendak are absent.
We'll move to oral communications. Do we have any speakers that would like to speak on any of our items today? Test, test. Yeah, they moved these things, so maybe. Okay, seeing none, we'll close oral communications, move to consent. Entertain a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, let's call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
And we have a public hearing.
Item 3A is adoption of the annual plan for fiscal year 2022 for the Garden Grove Housing Authority, and Mr. Nguyen is here to give the report.
Good evening, Chair and other Commissioners. The item before you tonight is the 2022 Annual Plan for the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. The plan is the comprehensive guide to the Housing Authority policies, operations, and strategies for meeting local housing needs and goals. The Housing Authority is required to submit this plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development prior to April 17th. In 2019, the Housing Authority received a CMAP score of 100%. CMAP is a combination of self-audit and self- and data submission to HUD that measures the performance of the Housing Authority. A score of 100% qualifies the Housing Authority as a high-performing agency. Due to the COVID pandemic, CMAP was waived in 2020 and '21, and the Authority was able to maintain the rating of high performer. And as a high-performing agency, we are only required to complete a streamlined format of the annual plan. A resident advisory board comprised of six tenant participants of the Housing Choice Voucher Program have reviewed the plan, and their comments are attached. The public hearing has been properly noticed on January 5th and 12th. It is recommended that the Housing Authority Commission conduct the public hearing, adopt the 2022 Annual Plan, and authorize the Director to certify the Housing Authority Annual Plan. That concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any question.
Do members have questions? So, we need to open a public forum here? Okay. So, we'll open up the public forum. Does anybody like to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
What was the motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
And last is matters. We will be accepting Ms. Victoria Tendak's resignation. So, we will file that, I assume. Is there any action required on that? Okay, kind of motion in a second.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Do we have any matters? Seeing none, we will adjourn. Next meeting will be on Tuesday. Oh, disappeared. Move me here. Okay, the next meeting will be Tuesday, April 26th, 2022, 5:30 PM.
Alrighty, thank you. We'll now convene City Council. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Bridigum.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen.
Here.
I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Deidre Nguyen. It's right there. Councilmember Bowie.
Yeah.
Councilmember Klaffenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here.
Alrighty, may I ask Assistant City Manager Maria Stipe to do the invocation, followed by Councilmember Kim Nguyen, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Sure, everybody just please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Lord, we ask for your blessing over this meeting. In the midst of the busy and complex world we live, we ask that you would help to guide us and provide us with the wisdom necessary to make the very best decisions for our Garden Grove community. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
Mister Bridigum, over your heart, turn face the flag, look down underneath. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, takes us on to presentations. We actually do have two listed, so 1A is a community spotlight, recognizing the Garden Grove High School Boys Basketball Team for winning the CIF SS Division 4AA Championship, so.
Okay, this evening, the Garden Grove City Council is very pleased to recognize the Garden Grove High School Boys Basketball Team for winning the 2022 CIF Southern Section Division 4AA Championship this last February. With Garden Grove High School Boys Basketball Team Coach Brian Gerard and Coach Andy Shamika, please come forward. If you can just kind of come up here and stand in front of the podium. You can turn around and face your teammates there, and we're gonna all just give you a round of applause. And Garden Grove High School and Fullerton High School went head-to-head in the CIF Southern Section Division 4AA Championship game, with Garden Grove capturing the title with a score of 54 to 50. Not only was this an amazing win, this was Garden Grove Boys Basketball Team's first CIF title in the high school's 101-year history. The victory put Garden Grove's record to 22 wins and eight losses, including a 10-and-1 record at home this season. Playing five league games and three playoff games that all came down to the wire prepared the Argonauts for the final seconds of the championship game, said Coach Gerard. It's also extremely exciting to know that several players on the roster had played for the city's youth basketball team, or league. The city couldn't be prouder of these young athletes and their coaching staff for their perseverance, character, and spirit. At this time, the mayor and City Council would like to present the Garden Grove High School Boys Basketball Team with certificates in recognition of their 2022 CIF Southern Section Division 4AA Championship. Congratulations. We wish you all the very best in your future athletic and academic endeavors. So, please all come forward.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, it might be easier.
You guys know each other, you can hit the right one.
It's like, wait, what?
If you want to, if you want to come in here, you have to go squeeze around.
There we go, there we go.
Yeah, maybe five and five, you got your 10, right?
Meet up on your titties.
There you go. Is everybody in there?
Is not she in there?
Can you guys? Yeah, we've got this thing in the way.
The short card.
Yeah, I think we're, yeah.
Good?
Yeah.
Congrats, you guys. Go Argos!
Next year, next year, we're expecting big things. Of course, they'll probably move you up a division.
About your season, about your team, about anything?
I'm just, I'm exceptionally proud of them. We work very hard. The fact that they're all friends makes all the difference in the world, and I'm just very appreciative of how hard they worked for me and all the things that we accomplished this year, so.
Good job, Coach, good job, Keith.
Alrighty, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome to go ahead and clear out, don't feel like you. We'll give them a minute to go ahead and, yeah.
I'm sure there's homework to beat you.
Thanks, guys. Alrighty, takes us on to 1B, Community Services Department update, as presented by John Montanches.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Thank you for allowing us to present on our upcoming event, the Garden Grove Reimagine Open Streets event. We're excited, it's kind of two years in the making. It was originally slated to happen in 2020, and obviously, for unforeseen reasons, we had to push it back. But we're excited to be able to present it here in '22. We know the community is excited to have events back, and given some of our previous events we just had, a lot of people showed up. So, we're excited to hopefully have a lot come to our Open Streets event this year. I'm here with Recreation Supervisor Mark Freeman, and he's gonna give you the presentation.
Thanks, John. Good evening, Mayor Jones and members of the Commission. Or, excuse me, City Council, not Commission. And thank you for this opportunity to present an overview of our very special and large-scale event, Open Streets, as John mentioned, right here in the downtown area on April 2nd. Terry, can we have the screen? Thank you. All right. Now, it's been five years, like John said, since we hosted our last Open Streets event, but we're pleased to bring it back to highlight the- to highlight the energy of Garden Grove's evolving downtown area with its exciting and engaging programming stretching across our 2.2-mile route. Now, as in the past, the goal of Open Streets is to temporarily close roadways to cars in order to open the community's eyes to areas perhaps not seen on foot, and to also offer programming not experienced before here in Garden Grove. Now, here's the route for this year's event. It runs along Acacia Parkway, kind of the thoroughfare through downtown Garden Grove, and then jumps, goes from 8th Street to Nelson, and then jumps up to, along the Congressional Medal of Honor Bike and Pedestrian Trail that goes from Nelson all the way over to Brookhurst. Now, as you can see on the route map, there are multiple symbols shown there. The numbers represent the various activity spokes that we'll be having along the route. The purple hexagons and lines indicate the major street closures, and the turquoise diamonds are speed reduction zones that will be monitored by our Police and Public Works Department. The key things there is to just note the big street closures. Obviously, southbound Euclid is going to be closed from Lamson all the way down to Garden Grove Boulevard. The only part of Euclid that will be open will be northbound coming off of Stanford, so that way people can access the parking lots across the street and at the school. And then, 9th Street will still be open, and then the east-west streets of Lamson and Stanford, and I'm forgetting the street name that runs in the middle. But it's, those will all be, actually, Nutwoods, excuse me, will be open. They'll just be the speed reduction zones as people cross the streets there, and we all have signal lights there for pedestrians, and so that way, they can get across safely for the event. Now, before I go on to talk about the various activities that we have planned on each of the spoke, I want to touch upon the city's efforts to publicize the event. So, with our marketing strategy, it's been our goal to advertise this event to our diverse community. And as you can see here on the slide, we have four different flyers in four different languages in our attempt to reach out to everyone, to our diverse community, like I said. Continue on marketing. We have created a marketing strategy that we developed with our Public Information Office that we believe is multifaceted and extremely comprehensive. As you can see from the list on the side, there are quite a few things that we've done, and that really doesn't even list it all. But some of the key points, we are working with Media Max and Max IQ Digital Marketing Firm, which they put the ads, as you see on the top two pictures, on hundreds of different websites. This is MSN, CNN, we've seen them on Fox, and kind of all the major websites, and all kind of websites that would appeal to people coming to this kind of event as well. We have ads at 10 different bus shelters and 17 bus benches throughout the city. As you can see on the bottom, those are the bus benches, and they're also in different languages as well. And then, our social media campaigns across all of our city websites or city social media platforms. We've been doing, hitting those pretty hard with paid ads and boosts and those kind of things, to really try to spread the word, and we're getting a lot of traction on those posts. And then, lastly, we're gonna show you a promo that GGTV3 just created, and should be released today if it hasn't been already. But here's a quick peek of it.
Rush over traffic is bumper-to-bumper with no relief in sight. Motorists are encouraged to find alternate routes.
Whoa!
Everyone qualifies, no car needed, not all participants will hear these sounds. Interesting sights and smells, also likely possible side effects. Uncontrollable smiling, increased heart rate and laughter. Your mileage may vary, no credit needed or checked. No animals were harmed in the making of this announcement. This video for entertainment purposes only. Reimagine Garden Grove's Open Streets Saturday, April 2nd, 2 to 6 PM. Don't miss it, enjoy responsibly.
It's a fun little video that I created, and that'll be posted on all of our social media platforms and distributed on our normal means. So, moving on to our different activities that we're gonna have throughout, along the route. That's the fun part. What are we doing at the event? So, first, one thing I want to highlight is on Spoke 10, which is the section closest to, it's on the bike trail closest to Brookhurst, so that last leg of the bike trail. The city is partnering with a local coalition called OC Grow, which stands for Orange County Growth, Resilience, Opportunities, and Wellness. OC Grow will be providing all sorts of programming along their leg that will be focusing on mental, physical, social, and community wellness. Some of these activities include yoga, dance instructions, Tai Chi, community gardening, and much more. While Open Streets is all about bringing something new, there are a few staples, of course, that we need to bring back. Some of those staples are live music, live music and DJs, and multiple food trucks and food from local restaurants. As you can see, the car with the little girl, the paintable car that we did, we're bringing back two of those this year, because it was so popular. We wanted to have more for people to do. And then, also, Public Works is bringing out all of their heavy machinery for their version of an open house called Touch a Truck. So, those are some of the things we're bringing back. Now, some of the new activities that we're bringing this year is, one is the Ferris wheel. That'll be right on the corner, or in the intersection of Nelson and Acacia, right there, kind of midway point. We're gonna be having an outdoor archery, which is something that we offer in the city already with our youth programming at the Sports and Rec Center, as you can see in that top-right picture. But that's gonna be, we're gonna set up a range, and we've partnered with a local business that runs an archery program called Good Shot Archery, just off Stanford, just down the street from us. And they're gonna be helping us run that outdoor archery range. Also, a Lucha Libre show, that's gonna be quite the spectacle. It's gonna be right in the middle of the intersection of Euclid and Acacia, right smack there. So, it's gonna be quite the scene to see. And here, there's gonna be a special guest there. So, make sure you attend and watch that, watch their shows. And then, lastly, one of the other things we're excited about is a pump track, which is that bottom-right corner, if you're not familiar with it, where it's, anyone who's on a bike, scooter, or skateboard can go on that ramp, and we'll have a company there helping people out to learn how to do that. But that'll be exciting, and that'll be on the leg, the bike trail, where the playground's at, near the playground and basketball court. Keeping going, another thing we're also really excited to announce is that there will be a large new art installation on display on the first leg of the bike trail near Nelson Street. This 13-foot-tall by 20-foot-wide art installation is a homage to, honoring the red car, which, as we know, ran along the new, runs along the New Medal of Honor Bike and Pedestrian Trail. Now, this picture is an old rendering, that's not the final rendering. We'll want to have it be a little bit of a reveal for you guys when we're out there. But that will be, that's the location where it'll be in. It's gonna be quite large, and it's coming together very nicely. One more large element of Open Streets is our continued cosponsored event, Art in the Park with Garden Grove Unified School District. Art in the Park showcases the best of the best artwork from Garden Grove students. And typically, this standalone event is held in March, but the district was kind enough to be able to shift their date so that their students' artwork could be viewed by a much larger audience. We're really excited to have that event as part of Open Streets. A little bit more about it is there will be nearly 1,000 pieces of art on display created by Garden Grove students inside the Courtyard Center, as well as a myriad of free art opportunities and activities for all ages to experience out on the street just outside the Courtyard Center. And finally, we have, the city is also excited to be partnering with multiple local businesses and organizations for this event. The first one being Steel Craft, which they will be hosting a craft boutique inside their facility, a bike valet, so people can come and park their bikes if they need to, and also having live music during and after the event, the Open Streets event, until 9:00 PM. Cottage Industries will also be participating, and they'll be serving food from several of their future restaurants, and also offering many types of family-friendly art activities all along 8th Street, right where their development is starting. The Gym Theater will also be offering programming inside and outside of the theater, including health and fitness demos from their dancers and actors on the Art in the Park stage, as well as tours of their theater. And lastly, the Downtown Businesses Association is hosting live music and a craft beer garden by day, and then keeping the party going by night with a Main Street after-party with more live music entertainment until 10:00 PM. And that street rule, Main Street at Acacia to Garden Grove Boulevard will remain closed during that time. And then, that concludes my report. We hope to see everyone there on April 2nd from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. And as a reminder, anyone can get more information and the latest updates by visiting our event webpage at GGCity.org/OpenStreets, and by following our Facebook event page at Facebook.com/GGOpenStreets. Thank you, and I'd be happy to, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Mark, great job.
Thank you.
Looking forward to this event. Any questions, comments by colleagues? Cool. Alrighty, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
We will move right along, if my screen comes back on. That takes us to oral communications. I have exactly one card. Maureen Blackman, come on up.
Nick Gibson, Tom Rieper. God, do I get their time? Can you share it with me? Hello. Hi, I'm Maureen Blackman. I am way off topic, something super fun, but now I'm going into the dark mode. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Something crazy is going on. I want to talk about my concerns and refresh our memory on the area of Garden Grove, in the area of Garden Grove that has long been a history of crime, decay, sex deviation, drug use, and blight. You see how that transition works? I'm talking about the area of Garden Grove Boulevard between Beach and Galloway. The 60s and 70s weren't kind of the Boulevard. Older businesses became outdated and moved or closed, leaving a void. The sexual revolution came on the scene, and the bars and the raunchy, along with the bars and the raunchy nightlife. So raunchy that the city had to install bollards on the sides streets to keep cars so they wouldn't drive into the neighborhoods and leave their litter behind. The police were caught in the middle of the tensions. Does that sound familiar? After the struggle, the bar scenes moved along, and so did the other businesses, such as the bowling alley and some of the other shops. They just couldn't hang on long enough to be, to find out what old would be new again. The Boulevard's demographics were changing. Korean businesses started to pop up. All but the romantics and the frat house remained from that era. However, it wasn't until the last 10 years that the era started to, area started to see real improvement. A residential subdivision, upscale foodie spots, H-Mart, vintage 1979 desserts, fudge shops, McCallie Candy, and more. The old buildings were grays and new buildings were built in the way. Rodeo 39 is a boost, too, so we had hope. However, one thing that hasn't changed is the sleazy motels. They house parolees, including sex defenders, drug users, rehab rejects, prostitutes, and jail releases. When they can't afford the $65 a night room, they take to the streets and the viaducts. Cleanup after cleanup happens, and yet they are back shortly after. Crime through the roof. I Googled on Nexus Lexus, there's more than 500 infractions between January 1st and today. Some of those that were, that I printed one page, because I didn't want to waste my ink. Motor theft, substance abuse, robbery, some more substance abuse, drug equipment violations, theft from motor vehicles. This was last week, actually. This was from March 21st to March, from March the 7th to the 21st. Motor vehicle theft. A lot of these are taking place in the motel parking lots and on the side streets. Theft from vehicles, blah, 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 blah. You get the picture. On the agenda for the Administration's and Appeals Board this Thursday is a proposed project, Crazy Beer and Wine. It would be next to Crazy Smoke, the drug paraphernalia and romantics, the hardcore porn shop. There's a crazy liquor store directly across the street, but somehow an area police describe as hive crime. ABC thinks it's a good idea to have another convenient beer and wine shop. I don't. If the head shop and beer/wine applied together, would it be approved? I think this area of our city needs an opportunity zone. Clean the neighborhood up, maybe find grants for first-time business owners, and plan for a future that links Beach Boulevard to Brookhurst, and not with the current parade of parolees. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only card we have. Anybody else wishing to speak at oral? Okay, seeing none, we will close oral communications. We're now gonna recess to other legislative bodies. So, we'll go to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Member Bridigum.
Here.
Member O'Neil.
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen.
Yeah.
Member Klaffenstein.
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie.
Yeah.
And Chair Jones.
Here. Okay, we already did oral communications. We'll go on to consent items. Just 2A, receive and file the minutes. Can I get a motion? Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn to the Sanitary District, and I will hand it over to President John O'Neil.
Thank you very much. This time, a call-roll for the Sanitary District.
Member Bridigum.
Here.
Member Bowie.
Yeah.
Member Jones.
Here.
Member Klaffenstein.
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Vice President Deidre Nguyen.
Yeah.
And President O'Neil.
This time, we have already held oral communications simultaneously with the other bodies. We have one item on consent. I get a motion for that?
A motion.
Second.
Second call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you, very short agenda here. Any matters from board members? Any matters from board members? Well, seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn until the next meeting, April 26th, in this room at 5:30, 6:30. Turn it back over to Council.
Thank you. We'll reconvene City Council. That takes us on to consent items. It's recommended that items 3A through 3N be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item.
Move the ballot.
Hey, roll call vote for the full list.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Alrighty, uh, public hearings, item 4A.
Item 4A is approval of the fiscal year 2022-23 Annual Action Plan and authorized submitted to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And Mr. Throne is here to give the report.
Hello and good evening, Mayor and City Council. The purpose of the item before you is to conduct a public hearing for the city's fiscal year 22-23 action plan for the use of HUD funds and to authorize the action plan submission to HUD. The city's action plan must address the priority objectives outlined in the five-year consolidated plan, which was adopted by City Council in 2020. HUD requires a public hearing be conducted prior to the approval of the fiscal year 22-23 action plan to receive and utilize HUD grants. Approximately 5.6 million in HUD funds will be available during fiscal year 22-23. This budget includes approximately 2.5 million in carryover or previously unallocated HUD funds from prior year's entitlement allocations and a new allocation of 3 million, approximately 3 million. Program plans and funding recommendations for fiscal year 22-23 are based upon the priority objectives and input received during the public comment period on community and housing development needs conducted during the preparation of the five-year consolidated plan. During fiscal year 22-23, HUD funds will address the following Garden Grove housing and community development needs. So first, public services. We plan to fund the special resource team, $122,292, to assist approximately 1,000 homeless individuals with essential services and street outreach. We plan to fund the senior center, $162,306, to assist approximately 300 seniors. We also plan to fund Meals on Wheels program, $20,000, to assist 230 individuals. The next item is public infrastructure, which is, um, approximately $800,000 in CDBG funding is recommended for the Josephine Acacia Street Project, which is projected to assist 3,050 individuals. Roughly 1.3 million in prior year resources will be carried over to complete the Josephine Acacia Storm Drain and the Community Center Bridge projects. The next item is owner-occupied housing rehabilitation, funded at approximately $100,000 in CDBG funding and is recommended, and is recommended to assist 16 owner-occupied rehabilitation projects for single-family homeowners in Garden Grove. Approximately 75,000 in prior year resources will be carried over to complete fiscal year 21-22 home repair projects. The next item is, um, for economic development programs, so $400,000 in CDBG funding is recommended to continue the Jobs First Program and is projected to create and retain 20 jobs. Additionally, $200,000 in prior year resources will be carried over to fund additional Jobs First Program loans and grants. The next item is affordable housing, so approximately $250,000 in home funding is recommended to continue the HARP Program, which is a tenant-based rental assistance program as provided by Interval House. Approximately 1 million will be carried over to complete the Valley View Senior Villas Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program, as well as the Stewart Drive Permanent Supportive Housing Project. And lastly, we have the Emergency Solutions Grant, and our funding's approximately 173,000 in ESG funds, um, for the following activities. So street outreach. We, we plan to fund Moving Forward Psychological Institute, $30,000, to assist 50 homeless individuals with essential services. For emergency shelter, excuse me, we plan to fund Interval House and Illumination Foundation a total of $73,000 to assist 51 homeless individuals with shelter and essential services. For rapid rehousing, we plan to fund Illumination Foundation, 31,006, or 963, to assist four homeless households with rental assistance and essential services. Homeless prevention, we plan to fund Mercy House, $20,000, to assist six households with, um, rental assistance and essential services, and that's for the at-risk homeless population. So that's for the precariously housed. And then lastly, we have homeless management information system, and we plan to fund 211 Orange County, $5,195, to manage the county's coordinated interest system and homeless management information systems. Lastly, we plan to fund administration, approximately $502,916 in CDBG home and ESG funds to recommend for staff and material costs for program management, project development, and monitoring, as well as public communication, HUD reporting, and financial administration. All HUD citizen participation requirements have been met. Public notices regarding the draft action plan, including an invitation to share comments at this public hearing, were published on February 18th, 2022, in local English, Spanish, and Vietnamese language newspapers, exceeding HUD's 30-day public comment period. The proposed fiscal year 22-23 action plan will allow the city to access 3 million in new entitlement grants from HUD and an estimated 2.5 million in unexpended previous year's funds. The allocation of HUD funds effectively leverages competitive grants and the city's general funds. The fiscal year 22-23 budget will be amended in accordance with the approved action plan. Staff recommends that City Council open the public hearing and accept comments, and then, following discussion, direct staff to submit the fiscal year 22-23 action plan to HUD for approval, as well as authorize the city manager to execute amendments and make modifications as appropriate on behalf of the city. This concludes my report, and I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Monica. Okay, questions or clarification before we open the public hearing?
Just one. I noticed under the, um, paragraph on Emergency Solutions Grant, the different, uh, Interval House, Illumination, I didn't see CityNet. Are we partnering with them any longer in the city of Garden Grove?
So CityNet, um, we offered them a $20,000 street outreach contract. Okay. And they refused, so...
Is there any reason for that, or?
I think it's the limited funding that we, we were offering them. Since it's part of our shelter cap, which is approximately $100,000, um, we have to allocate both emergency shelter as well as street outreach through that, so I think our offer of 20,000 just wasn't, yeah, it wasn't, sometimes sub-receipients don't receive enough money, so it's, it's not really worth necessarily the $20,000.
Okay.
In, in program administration and other, other costs associated to administering that grant.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Councilmember, I might just add that, um, that a lot of the work to be well OC is doing is, is probably more than picking up some of the slack of what they were doing, so...
Others?
Thank you. It's like sausage making.
Okay, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on 4A? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Um, this does require approval of the fiscal year action plan?
Yeah. Second. Motion second.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Stephanie, go ahead. You want to make comment?
Yeah, just a comment. I think this document is extremely important, and I obviously know the residents probably don't want to sit through, and this isn't exactly light reading. However, there are some really good numbers and data and just nuggets in here that when, when residents are asking, what is the city of Garden Grove doing for our homeless population and for those that are in need and so forth? This really does spell out a lot of that and really talks in depth about the different organizations we partner with and really kind of a blueprint of how we're walking through this crisis and these issues day by day. So I would definitely, I hope this, and I'm sure it will be available to the public online. Um, you know, some of these pages really just, again, spell out what we're doing and the hard work that we're putting in and the partnerships we have in the city, so I just really encourage the community to take a look at it. Thank you.
Thanks, Steph. Well said. All right, 5A.
I think, I'll move to table that.
Oh, that's right.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think Public Works would like to hold or table this item, uh, for now, and we'll bring it back if it's ready to be brought back.
Okay, sounds good. We'll move on to ordinances presented for a second reading and adoption, item 6A.
Item 6A is second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2932 entitled, "An Ordnance of the City Council, the City of Garden Grove Adopting the City of Garden Grove District Map Following Review of the Population Changes Resulting From the 2020 Federal Decennial
Okay. Move to approve a motion?
Motion move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote, or I mean, call the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Alrighty, that takes us on to matters. We have none listed. Any, um, any matters from councilmembers going around the board? George?
Yeah, um, congratulations to Topanga Shurf. If, I hope I said her last name right. Um, attended the Miss Garden Grove, uh, pageant last week, and she was the winner, so she was the 2022, uh, Miss Garden Grove. Also, um, congratulations to Sierra Bennett, um, from, I think she's Garden Grove High School, and she was the first runner-up, so we'll be probably seeing a lot of those two in the next year at the different events and whatnot.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor?
Nothing.
Scott Stiles?
No items, Mr. Mayor.
Alrighty, um, General Counsel, do we have anything to report?
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council. We, we did have, uh, to close session item, uh, earlier this evening, and there is no reportable action out of those two close session items. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alrighty, um, I have nothing to add either, so we will wrap it up at that. Thank you, everyone, for attending, and we will stand adjourned.